We actually didn't do a February bingo last year. We did two in March. So if you line them up, we were still seventy dollars this year than last year.
Clock's not terribly slow today. Only fifteen seconds off.
Bet you could wait until that one says six and still be on time.
I'll go by mine. Get out of here fifteen seconds. You all set? This meeting will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Benjamin, here. Baylor, here. Katsdorf, here. Meyer, here. Sardina, here. Tarks, here. Mr. Holdman is excused.
Is there anyone deserving to be heard? Come forward and a name and address. Yes, please. And you'll have three minutes.
My name is Matthew Kelly. I own White Checking Kelly across the street at one two six zero two West Hampton Avenue. Uh, we are an accounting firm. I am here today to uh ask if there's, well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you that you guys last, I believe it was last May, put in a handicap spot by the side of our building. Uh, but I'm here today to talk about the parking in front of, in front of the building. It's two hour parking now in the front of the building and I know for a fact that it's being um taken advantage of by other uh businesses on the road. I don't um have proof of that at this point because we're so busy right now that I don't, I see them out there and I know they're there for longer, but we've called a few times and they, they've been asked to move. But um at this point, it's just becoming a problem for us. I ran a report tonight. My average client is fifty-five years old, so you can understand that it's hard for them to walk very far. And um we're having the most complaints we've had this year. Now, I'm happy that we have a lot more businesses on Hampton. I'm happy that we've grown, but it's becoming a, a problem for my business. I don't know about other businesses. But I don't know if there's a solution or if we could um make the side street two hour parking or something less or a few spots in front of my spot that's fifteen minute parking. Or if it was during tax season, because for eleven weeks I have a fifteen hundred people coming through my doors. And the rest of the year is not as busy, obviously, because it's tax time for us. So I'm just coming to you guys to see if there's a solution or something that I could suggest. Put something in writing for you, but I just wanted to start the ball rolling and see if there's anything possible. I hate to lose clients. I don't want people to say I'm not coming back because I gotta walk two blocks to get over to the accounting firm. I do have clients that pop in and out, drop stuff off, pick stuff up, pick payrolls up, and they do not like having to come from all the way up around the corner by Napa. Um, so I don't know what the answer is, but I certainly would be happy to sit down and figure something out. But I'm coming to you guys first to see what you think.
We can most certainly take a look at it. Uh, and we can't get into a full discussion about it tonight, but I did have some clarification. When you said you call, are you calling the police dispatch?
Correct, and they are, they're coming and they're, they're walking. First of all, they're finding out where the car that's been sitting there, whose business it's from, and then they're going in and talking to them.
Okay.
Yeah, and there has been a, a couple of tickets written, I believe, for cars that are sitting there for a very long time.
And then uh your customers, how many would you have come in during this time? At one time, would you have multiple?
Oh yeah, so like I said, fifteen hundred people come through the doors in eleven weeks. So anywhere from thirty to forty people a day are coming through our doors um to drop off taxes and sit down with us. And they sit down with us from anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes and then they're out the door. And then a lot of times they forget something or, and they have to come by and drop off a W two they forgot or a ten ninety-nine, that sort of thing. So it, it's nice to be able to just come and go, quickly stop and, and uh drop something off and then take off. But it's been so, it's been so congested lately. It's been uh very frustrating and, and um a lot of complaints.
Alright, so we, we're making note of it and then uh Ben is the administrator?
Yep.
And then um you can stay in contact with him and then we'll, we'll be in touch with the police as well.
That's great. I really appreciate your help. Thanks.
Thank you. You too. Is there anyone else deserving to be heard? None. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I heard uh Tom and Bill. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Uh, communications, anything other than the department reports?
I did want to acknowledge the passing of former pre- uh village president, uh, I believe. Oh, now the name's slipping for me.
John Ellinger?
Yes, um, I did want to uh make a note of that um and have the village remember his service uh to our village and the time that he put in.
And I also had the same uh comment uh that he passed away a couple of weeks ago and so a special thank you to him for his uh years of dedication and service to the village of Butler. Committee reports, building board?
Uh, building board met at five thirty this evening and uh we approved occupancy permits at one twenty-seven fourteen West Hampton for Air with Play, Eclat Enterprises, Majestic Eight Studio, Sparkle Hair Design by Kayla, The Beauty Parlour slash Kate Etzel. End of report.
Finance committee?
Uh, finance committee met February nineteenth and we uh approved uh January invoices of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. End of report.
Thank you. Community foundation? Oh, that's me. Uh, we met at the Clark House. Uh, we had a, we just talked about general maintenance. And then uh we started to learn a little bit about um part of our meeting was uh the history of the house and we are working to get tours established again. End of that report. Community events?
Uh, community events committee met on um February twelfth. And we discussed um continuing action for bingo, discussed plans around the um start of planning for the Fourth of July parade. We held bingo on February fifteenth. At eighty-three people attend our first session and sixty-eight people attend our second. Next bingo was scheduled for March fifteenth. Um, end of report.
Thank you. Plan commission, we met a couple of weeks ago and we talked about the uh consolidation of the lots for Butler Tool. And I'll add a little bit more to that under new business when we talk about that in uh section C. Didn't I do library? Library, uh going, oh, going back to the library board? Sorry.
Was library work?
Yes, sorry.
Library board met Tuesday, February eleventh. Uh, very items uh were discussed, including uh we reviewed the financial policy. Our PC use is trending upward. Bridges is getting us a new router, so it saves the library a couple of dollars. Uh, they had an event called Stuffy Sleepover, which was a huge accept, success. And on Facebook, it kind of showcased our library, which was kind of neat. Uh, well, on my report I had, we were ho- hosting coffee with a cop on the twenty-seventh, so that's been done. Hopefully that was a success. Uh, tiny art show is April third. Uh, there's gonna be a puzzle afternoon, April twenty-sixth at the community center. And as always, we're looking for board members. End of report.
Thank you. I apologize for missing you.
I apologize for calling it out.
Well, it was a while ago. Uh, next meeting is actually next Tuesday.
Thank you. Reported the administrator.
I just wanted to mention a few things. Uh, we are going to be getting uh MMST's billing uh probably this evening or tomorrow. So water bills will be going out this week or next. Um, we do have a public service commission hearing um on a water rate increase tomorrow at eleven AM in front of the administrative law judge that is going to be held virtually. The uh sign-on instructions are on our website and also on the uh bulletin boards around the village. Um, we do have um our stream bank stabilization project, road project and water die testing projects moving forward. We just had our uh meeting today um with Ari Smith and the engineers for the uh wat- die testing project, stream bank. We're gonna be meeting out there in March and road projects going out to bid. Um, and the bids will be open on Thursday. And then we do have an, an election coming up and the election, the ballots will be going out next Monday for the April first election. Um, end of report.
Thank you. New business, discussion and possible action on the first amendment of the professional services agreement between the Village of Butler, Wisconsin and Safe Built Wisconsin LLC.
So I have Mr. Alan Green here. He is the account manager for Safe Built. Um, he will be going over the handouts that I provided to all of you. Um, he uh has, him and I have worked extensively on this uh amendment to the professional services agreement. This will be for planning services, so it's not, you know, it's not a uh uh, an immediate cost. It's basically when uh we feel like a, another hand needs to be involved. If we not want some advice on how to do stuff, if we have a specific section of the code that we want to rewrite, we can contract out to Safe Built um and they can have one of their planners uh look over it um and uh do some work for us. It kind of frees up our time uh to focus on other things in the village um when we are really busy. Um, so uh Al, if you want to come up and kind of give a little um discussion on, on what the contract all entails and what your services are.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Al Green. I'm the account manager for Safe Built. Uh, I cover Illinois, Wisconsin and Minnesota. Uh, my counterpart, Dave Hendricks, who is the Wisconsin operations manager, couldn't be here tonight. But we've been doing business with the village uh since two thousand and fourteen, so eleven years now. We appreciate your business. Uh, in your packet there, there's uh so um some detail on what we've done in um twenty twenty-four. So there were uh just real high level, I'll go over this and then I'll go into the planning part of it. Uh, so there were ninety-six permits that were i- issued um for um building construction and such. Um, we did a hundred and twenty inspections and ninety-eight of those passed and that's a eighty-one point six seven a percent pass rate, which is pretty, pretty, pretty average. Uh, the second page there then just breaks it down between residential and commercial, so you can see what we're doing on either of those. Any questions on that? So in regards to planning, so the planning surfaces, ser- services that Ben and I have uh have, have talked about are, are great for municipality of your size. Uh, so you don't have to have a full-time, you know, planner on staff. Uh, Safe Built has uh um many planners located all over the country that are certified in multiple states to do projects of all sizes everywhere from a comprehensive planning to community planning, zoning and land use, planning permitting, urban design and such. Um, the contract is set up, so it's, as, as Ben said, it's for an as-needed basis. So if you don't use us, you, you, you don't get billed, but when you do, uh depending on the level of complexity, um, there are, are different rates. Um, and that goes from a, a planning manager all the way down to a, a planning technician. From my experience, um municipalities that use us for this, most of the planning that they've come to us for, for help uh falls into the either senior planner or associate planner level. Um, don't always need a planning manager unless it's gonna be very, very complex. And it's, it's a very simple kind of zoning thing. It could be a planning technician. So uh you have some handouts there that kind of outline the program and how communities and such need us. But I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
What have we been doing for planning up till now? I know we've.
It's basically been me and Aaron. Um, basic, and what, what, what's happened is we identify a section of the code that um might need updating. Um, we kind of write what we, uh, what we believe is the will of the board. I'm sorry, scut me. Um, and then we um send it off to the attorney to make sure that there's no state statute court cases that it would be in violation of. Um, and then it goes before the plan commission and then the village board. Um, so this would be, uh, they would be kind of doing that step. Uh, we'd still have the attorney check over that um just to double, triple check. Um, and then it would go on to the plan commission.
Okay. So the agreement that you're asking for, it's, it's first amendment, is it subject to change or why are we calling it a, like, the first amendment?
So we have the current service contract with them for the building inspection services. So this is amending that contract to include this.
Okay.
Everything else remains the same.
Okay, got it. That makes sense.
Other questions?
And I did also want to mention that our attorney did look over the agreement and we made, uh, we went back and forth and made the changes that he suggested.
Uh, the only question I had is on the, in the whereas on the second paragraph says that the service delivery was March twenty-seventh of twenty nineteen. Is that the right?
That was the latest contract. There were a few earlier contracts. The original contract was signed in two thousand and fourteen.
I see.
Uh, there was um, we used to do business, uh, business under a different name uh than in two thousand and eighteen. I think it was in two thousand and eighteen or maybe the beginning of two thousand and nineteen when Safe Built uh came in. Um, but the la- the latest contract, the one that's being amended to add this was from three twenty-seven nineteen.
I understand. Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Guys are easy on me.
Too easy. No, I think it's, I think it'll be, be a good idea alleviate Ben and Aaron from some of the craziness they have to get through. And I think they'll have a better grasp right away on that versus a lot of research that those guys are, are doing.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a benefit to us.
I agree.
That said, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement between the village and Safe Built.
I second that motion.
Uh, Brad and Eric, uh, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business, ordinance twenty-five dash oh six and ordinance to amend section two dash two B one of the Village of Butler municipal code.
This is just a, a touch-up ordinance. Um, I wanted to add some clarifying language to how um the reduction in poll workers work. Uh, currently the ordinance just reads that if the, uh, if the village administrator clerk gets approval, um, they can then uh delegate the duties of the reduced number of poll workers to the remaining number. Um, it doesn't say how. Um, we go about getting that approval, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um, so, you know, I know it, but you know, future administrator clerks will ha- know how to get that poll worker um count reduced.
So would it still come to the village board for approval?
Correct. That's what, that's what it, I would submit to you in writing, uh, which would be the resolution. Um, and then you would grant that if you so choose.
Okay, so it's just a clarification.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-five oh six and ordinance to amend section two dash two B one of the Village of Butler municipal code.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on a certified survey map for Mike Broth's project director for MSI General, agent for Butler Tool to combine Butler Tech's keys BV one zero zero nine zero five seven located at four seven three one North one hundred twenty-fifth Street. BV one zero zero nine zero six zero located at four seven two two North one twenty-sixth Street. BV one zero zero nine zero five eight located at four seven one one North one hundred twenty-fifth Street. And BV one zero zero nine zero five nine located at forty-seven oh one North one hundred twenty-fifth Street. I will um add to this before I turn it over to Ben with a little bit more information is that the plan commission did meet uh two weeks ago. Uh, there was no public, there, nobody spoke at public uh hearing for it and there, the plan commission moved it on to the village board uh with their approval. So it's in front of us tonight and Ben can shed a little bit more light on it and Mike is here as well.
Yeah, so um Mike is here if you have any questions, but basically uh the Butler Tool building would like to uh combine all of their parcels that they all currently own, so that whole block is owned by Butler Tool. Um, last year they demoed one of the buildings on the far southeastern lot. There's still a building on the uh lot that's to the north of that. They're gonna demo that. Um, then with the CSM, they're gonna combine all of the properties because currently the two other parcels um bisect the building and that's in violation of our zoning code because we don't, you can't have two, uh, a structure on two different uh plots of land. Um, so this would kind of clear that up, combine all the lots, and then that would allow them to have an expansion that they're looking to get started um in uh early spring and then uh kind of getting the footings and whatnot done uh starting in May. So this would kind of let them uh start planning for that expansion that they want to get done this year.
With the um, are, in, in your, if you can come forward, you're gonna eventually do an addition.
Correct.
Yeah, and then will you have enough parking for the, the staff?
As of now, yes. They're not looking to add forty people. They're just looking at a couple of people.
Okay.
Um, just making more room for new equipment and some equipment may be unmanned too, so.
Okay.
Not a large office expansion, if I can say that.
Sure. Perfect, thank you. And I know we just was, discussed this quite a bit in the plan commission as well about the expansion. This helps them do their addition. Are there any questions for Mike? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion and we combine, uh, combine certified map for the properties at one twenty-fifth and one twenty-sixth Street Village of Butler.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve. Um, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, on opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business item D, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty-five dash oh eight. The resolution amending section twelve dot three A of the Village of Butler Employee Handbook regarding use of vacation leave. And I will say that I presented this to uh Ben just to take a look at it because there are, right now, to, to do carrier, if I understand this all correctly, to, to do a carryover of a couple of vacation days, you need village administrator approval?
Correct. So right now it's a use it or lose it um situation where no carryover is allowed. Um, unless there's an extraordinary circumstance and then they have to provide me in writing that request and then I can approve it.
So what this does is it just gives them uh five days that they can just carry over. Uh, we did talk about the paragraph that starts with consistent with the preceding paragraph. That was going to be deleted. We weren't gonna put a timeframe on those five days.
Correct. So I would just need a, a motion to amend the resolution if that's what the board wants.
And Ben did review this with department heads as well and that's how we kind of came up with the uh, the language.
So it's kept it five days. I can roll five days from twenty-four into twenty-five, but twenty-five into twenty-six, I can only roll five days. It's not.
It's not gonna compound. Correct. And, and, and our labor attorney took a look at that um and he, he put the language in there. So yeah, you can only carry over one week um year over year.
Got it.
Uh, the idea is just that we want employees to use the vacation that they're, they're, uh, we don't want them to lose it. But there are cer- situations where they just don't use it or.
Correct. And the idea is if, you know, if they were planning on going on a larger trip, if there was, their kid was graduating high school or they're getting married or whatever, you know, they can carry over that time if they would like.
We did that originally, the way it's set up right now, that we did that originally so there wouldn't be any carryover. Uh, unless they spoke to the village administrator first. So I think this is a mute, or a question here, um, because they can move it over if they talk to you and you okay it as a village administrator.
Correct. It's just the, the language that is currently in there. It, it rendered, it basically says that you need to have a, an extraordinary circumstance.
Exactly. That was the, was what we put in originally.
Why, why create that extra step? It's pretty common to have carryover of PTO.
Because when we wrote that originally, when we rewrote this originally, uh, it was the opposite direction. They did not want any carryover, period. Use it or lose it, and that was the whole idea.
I.
And now that it's become more lax, but I'm just giving you a reason why the village, it's written the way it is.
I don't think it's very employee friendly. If you get an administrator that doesn't agree with the carryover of the PTO, then the person's out, the PTO. It doesn't make sense to me.
Use it or lose it. I had to do the same thing when I was, when I was working for other companies. I had to use my vacation or lose it.
I, I, I think that's a terrible way to treat the employees.
I think it's an honest way of being. If you know you're gonna use it, you're gonna use it unless there's extreme circumstances. They come to talk to the village administrator and the problem's taken care of.
What happens if the administrator says no?
Then you lose it or lose it.
Ah, that's, well, I still think there is some of that in there, right? Because we're only carrying over five days, no matter what, forever and a day. It's five days no matter what. So if they don't use their next years up, they're, they're, they still have potential of losing time.
Yeah.
Right? I'm, I mean, I'm fine with not stacking it up. Then one day at retirement, someone's coming for a handout of a hundred thousand dollars, right? I mean, those.
Happened to us.
Well, right, we, we, we don't want it, but I, I don't think that five days, four, you know, forty hours is, is, is a lot to be able to carry over for one year. That's it. It's forty hours, no matter what. Each year you can carry forty hours. I think that's, that's more than fair.
How many people have requested?
Um.
Carry over their vacation.
The only p- person, uh, there's one this past year.
What?
Um, because they're ha- they were, they're having a child later this year.
So it's really not a, a major issue.
As of right now, I can't, I can't predict if this goes through, if that changes. Um, I wouldn't expect it because I think the people do like taking their time. Um, but again, this was just meant to give some more flexibility to people.
So I mean, if it was a big issue, it means they were getting way too much vacation time, right?
Sure. But still, there's still, you know, like a, you know, safe in there for us that it's not gonna be abused. It's forty hours. Can't, I mean, what abuse could happen, but I still think it's a feel-good for, for the employees.
Why does it have to be used prior to May first? Just the date.
Well, that, that, that was originally what um I put in there and then I, when I was talking to President Katsdorf, I had removed it and then when I sent it, I don't know if I sent the village attorney a old draft or not. Um, but I'm just looking if, if they want to get rid of that May first. So it's kind of like a stopgap saying, okay, you have to use it by this time. Um, versus, you know, letting it, letting it run um until the end of the year and then losing it. Um, so we, that, we just need a motion to remove this in the packet.
And just for clarification, vacation time runs from January through December.
Correct, yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the village resolution changing the vacation handbook information language. None of that sounded good. Information, language. None of that sounded good. Can I start over?
Second.
Thank you.
And that is to delete the May first timeline of that paragraph to clarify. Yes, okay. All right, a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, to me under new dis- new business discussion and possible action on an amendment to the village of Butler's schedule of fees for twenty twenty-five.
So this is just an amendment to, we passed the sign ordinance um, a few weeks ago. Um, in that we had a temporary sign uh, permit be created. Um, so this is just uh, to amend the schedule fees to have that uh, twenty-five dollar fee um, added to the schedule of fees.
And temporary signs are like businesses that are putting signs up for opening opener.
Correct. There, so in the, in the code right now, it, if people want to put up a temporary sign for like a grand opening or a promotion or whatnot. Um, technically it would, we would require a sign permit and they would have to pull, uh, pay the full sign permit fees and would have to go in front of the board. Versus if it's gonna be for a period of, I think we have twenty-one days. Um, if they're just gonna have like a promotion for that, they can just pay the twenty-five dollars. It's an administrative approval. Um, cause otherwise we would have to make them go through the whole sign permit fee process for that. So we have had people that wanted to do that, but then just decided not to because. Um, they didn't want to go through that, that process.
Does that apply to sign? Sir, how do we? So how do we know that? That that won't apply for, cause that's a, a home going up for sale is a.
It, it's, it's in, it's in the, it's in the code. The definition is in the code.
So this fee schedule is. Uh, approved? Is that what you're saying? These, these, this is what you can find online?
Every November with the budget, it's approved.
Right. So I don't know if it's a, just a oops. Error in entering of numbers, but if it's on there, I'm just was looking at uh. The non-resident and resident weekday uh, rental of the community building.
Mm-hmm.
A resident is a hundred and fifty dollars on the weekday and a non-resident is a hundred?
You have to take a look at that. I'm, I apologize.
Yeah, there's just, you know, cause I was, look, yeah, that's what I'm imagining happening, but if this is what's. Being posted, there's just a couple of things that I, I, you know. Like I caught in here and then, and then as far as like permit fees, there's, it's kind of, is it normal for it to be redundant? And then two different charges for that? I didn't understand either. So I don't know if that's a. An error somewhere. Under building permits, permit fees fifty dollars and then. Under residential, one and two family accessory buildings, fences and decks. Listed again, but it's seventy-five dollars.
I believe that the fees, I'm sorry, let me just scroll down to that.
I just wanna make sure that we have, if we're putting this out there, that these are some things that could have just been entered wrong.
Um, okay, and I'm sorry, can you tell me the first item?
Under, under building permits?
Yep.
Uh, fence permit fifty dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and then if you continue down to then residential, one and two family. Accessory buildings, which I'm assuming is like a shed and then fences and decks.
Okay.
Listed again and now it's seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, this, this was, yeah, I can. I apologize for that. Um, but yeah, that needs to, that, uh.
Well, we're all human, so we're, we're all looking at it again. It just kind of popped out at me. So I just wanna make sure we have it correct on the.
Yes. See, offenses should be removed for, from that.
And then we just have one that's in there that has nothing and that's commercial plan review. It's listed, but there's nothing for fees or anything. So.
Okay.
If it doesn't pertain.
Yeah, my guess is because we, we changed the, the way that these, this was presented. So my guess is that when that, when it was, that transition was made, there was just some errors that didn't get caught.
Great.
Thank you for pointing those out.
And now that we're looking at that, wasn't the ambulance transport fee more than a thousand? I, I thought there was. Why does twelve hundred sound correct to me?
So one's a thousand and one, I mean, and one non-residence, eleven fifty. For a BLS care. Is that, is that follow pretty standard for non, non-residents?
Yeah.
Only that little bit of a jump per se, not, I mean, not to, you know.
The.
Twenty-five dollars, a lot of money if you have to pay it. Don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah, the. I believe that I would have to go, this is, this was done, that I was, the fee schedule was updated for this two years ago. Um, I believe in twenty twenty-three, I would have to look back at the, at the fee schedule that was put forth at that point to give you an answer. On that.
Right, and to, to the redundancy, you know, ambulance transport fees a thousand. BLS care is a thousand. So is that the BLS care? That's, that's for the care, not the transport, correct?
To.
To, to Paul's question, ambulance fee, I think they're, they're two different things if by what it's coded as. BLS care is basic life, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I know where you're coming from. To be quite honest, I, I don't know why it's, why it's formatted in that way.
Should we maybe consider tabling this until the next meeting?
Yeah, I can, I can get all this updated. Yeah. I, I, again, I apologize for that.
Motion to table this one until our next meeting.
Oh, second. Motion has been made and seconded to table. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay. Motion passes. Item F, discussion on ways to increase community involvement and participation in village activities, meetings and committees.
So this was one of two items that came from last month's discussion. Um, on, it's kind of the continuing series of, you know, how we, how we can uh, work towards improving the village, getting more people involved. Um, and, and just kind of moving forward with that. So. Um, trustee Holdman uh, was the original one that came up to me and asked for this one to be taken up first. Um, so the, the goal of this to me is, is finding ways to. You know, generate more interest, generate, you know, more community involvement, whether that's in the activities, whether it's people coming to the meetings, serving on committees. Um, and I know that we've had this discussion, you know, in past years and, and I understand that, but I guess I just wanted to. Bring it back to the forefront, kind of make, you know, at least on my end, make some sort of checklist or, or, or something that I can, you know, that we kind of have a game plan of. You know, what should we all be doing to try to, to get more people involved? Um, and at least have, have that on the books um, for, for me, cause I want to make sure that I'm doing everything that I can to attract. Um, people to, to village events.
I think with respect to the village events, i- as a, as a group, I think we've. I, I think we found some footing with the amount of social media that we're doing and I think that. Ben, you and Aaron are a big part of that and being able to echo what. The committees and the library are posting online and, and really kind of propelling that forward. I. I know that, you know, trustee Holdman is pretty passionate about this and. You know, I wish she were here to participate tonight, but I, I think. To get more people involved, I, I, I think we're doing, I think we're doing what needs to be done. As best as we can to get those people to come to our events. The, the libraries, events, the sleepover, the, I mean, those were all successes and I think that that's. A tribute to the communication that comes out from the library and from, from your offices and, and. Yeah, I just think that. There's so much going on in people's lives to get everybody to commit to coming to all of the events is hard, right? And I think that, you know, you look at bingo as an example and we can talk about January over February. And how the non-event of weather in February impacted our turnout. Based off of what we were assuming was gonna come, right? So I, I think we just have to keep as a collective group pushing that forward as many ways as we can and. Social media, I, I think that we've done things in the past where we've done mailings. I know we've done them for, for parades and, and for the, for the breakfasts that we do in, in December and around Easter and. There's a cost associated with that, but I think that that helps keep people aware of it. But I, I don't know that we can do much more than that, you know, other than to continue to appeal to them to. To come to our events and participate. I think we're doing a great job with that. I really do. How do we get them to come to, to meetings and participate in our committees? You know, I'm putting things out there. Library is putting things out there. We've got things out there. I had a few people um. When I posted about joining the community events committee in February. Um, but as, as we dug into that, those people don't live in the village, you know, those, those are people that are outside of the village that. That saw the post and said, Brett, how can we help? And well, that's great. That doesn't get us across the finish line. But I think it helps continue that conversation.
And I, I think to, to your point, you know, the board does. Go to a lot of these events. Uh, and we can't all be there all together at, at once. But when we're there, I think we're, we're, we're working on making it happen. Uh, I think the only thing I could, I can come up with that. Could help is when board members are there, I think if we could take some time and actually talk with. The residents uh, about what's going on and, you know, talk to them about ways that they can help us and ask for, you know, things they want done. Uh, more so than us just being there working. I, I think that could help if we. Take a little bit of time aside, whether it be we all take. You know, a different event and, and set a little something up for us to walk around and talk with the residents. I, I think that could be another big help. To make more of a connection with us as a board.
Well, that, I mean, just, it's a great idea, but like at Easter or bingo. People are there doing the work and they don't have time to go.
But that's, that's what I said though. I said, the board members are, are doing all these things, but were they're working for the function to make it great, right? So, but not everybody. So like, I, I wasn't there per se working, but I could be there. Doing what I'm asking us to, to think about doing. And, you know, I'm gonna put my money where my mouth is and, and. Do those things because I, I, I think we put so much in and there's only so much of us to go around. But if we start connecting with the community with these events where we have them. In a, in a place to go talk to them about, you know, things going on, I, I think it could be a help and help us. You know, get these people on the committees and, and get their feedback more.
You know, you look at an event like National Night Out and all of the work that the chief and the police department put into that and. And they really carry, they shoulder the burden of that, but that's. You know, the, the library is there, you know, we're there, you know, Paul's there, Tom, everybody's there doing something and. And we're, you know, and visual. I think the challenge with us being there and still being visual and, and. Nobody really knows who we are. You know, think about it. I mean, they know who we are.
Exactly.
They don't necessarily correlate that to this.
Don't know.
Right.
But that's kind of making the point of, of, I mean, I was at National Night Out too, you know, helping with handing out the. You know, the food, right? We all, we all were there, right? I get it. But if we, and this was before I was a trustee, I was there, you know, helping out the, the fire department because. They were asked to help do the food. Uh, so I was there just helping them as just a member of the community. Uh. But they need, that's part of it, right? If they don't know us, but if we can get that part. Can't happen all at once. I get it, right? You guys, like I bend to the bingo, you guys are non-stop. There's no time for that, but to my point is, I was there. I, I could have. Started something like that and let people know that we're here, whether, when you're doing the bingo, like, hey, you know, trustee Baylor's here tonight. You know, if you have a moment, go out and talk to him. Uh, I, I think if we could do little steps like that, I think that is, with. The internet, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Right. It's unfortunate that most people don't know. Who you are, who's trustee Baylor is if you're out and about. They don't, wouldn't know you're a village trustee. They don't know I'm one or.
Yeah.
Place versa. I mean, we don't have, really get a lot of exposure.
Right. And I, I think we have opportunities.
To do our job. It's like. I, I was, wasn't able to make uh, coffee with the cop. Was that a success? Did anybody?
That's fantastic.
A lot of people turned up. And so that's gotten better through the years. Cause I've been there where there's only been like the same five people, you know, for many years. So I mean, it, it's, it's growing. So that, that helps. I think repetition helps, you know?
You know, and, and good, bad or indifferent, and you were talking about the elections and. For the most part, we all run unopposed, right? So there's no need to really put signs out with our names or our faces on them, but would that help? Maybe.
God, I got a box full of signs too.
With your picture?
No, just my name.
Oh, but, but, I mean, but you see, I mean.
But we need to do that, right? I mean, so I think if we get out there and, and at these functions and start making it known who, who we are. Uh, I think is gonna help us with what we see for this village.
You know, I, I, I think as a board, we do a great job. I think as a board, we do a great job and maybe that's why. Maybe that's why people, they've entrusted the village board and the village administration. And the police department and the fire department to continue to do the great things we do. As a whole. And maybe that's why we find participation.
You know, I.
At a minimum.
I don't get many complaints from the people who know I'm on the board, except I got a complaint, apparently our nail guy had a delivery last week or the week before. They dumped all the stuff on the sidewalk and it was there all day. Did he get permission to do that? No. That was the, that's usually the type, type of complaints we get. Now, I don't know if it was last week or the week before. I think it was a week, two weeks ago. Apparently he got a delivery and they plucked it all on the sidewalk and it took all day to get it in the, the building.
I would, I was not aware of that.
Right. And it's like, they tell me that two weeks later, I said, why did you just call the village hall right away? They would have the police over there to. How many, put a stick up his.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, Ben gets complaints often. I mean, but that doesn't. Get people to get in. I mean, they get, they're not participating with events to promote the village. They're just.
You know, the CPA next to the barber shop, you know? I've heard that complaint. I said, well, I personally can't do anything with that. You have to come here and tell them.
Right.
You know, that's what, you want us to put the meters back on?
No.
It's like you didn't want the meters and all, but they're right. I mean. I go get a haircut and I'm probably there an hour and a half or whatever and the same cars are.
No, I, I mean, I've seen it. The, the, there's some, there's definitely businesses that have employees and or owners parking right in front of their buildings all day. Long. I leave, they're there. I come home, they're there. I mean, we all, we all know what's going on and. And to his point, I don't know what the answer is, but it's definitely something that we're gonna look into, right? Cause that's what, that's what we do, but.
I mean, do they have time to mark the tires and then come back?
Nope.
And take it home? No. But it, it legally, it, it is a two-hour parking, right?
Yes. Uh, but we have to say on the agenda, to say on the agenda item, it's. Participation, I mean, we can, the department can become an issue. Uh, how many people do we have on constant contact?
Um, we have. Close to five hundred.
That's pretty good. I mean, I know those updates come out quite often.
Yes, yeah, and I've, I've been a little bit behind on that because of everything else that's been going on, but yes. Um, and I mean, we have, we have a good reach with our, with our um, Facebook stuff. I mean, we've had more engagement over the past several months. I'd say maybe even the past year than we have in a long time with our posts. I mean, we're getting, you know, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but you know, we're, we're getting between twenty and forty, you know, interactions and some comments and stuff, depending on what, what, what we're posting, which is a lot more than what we usually have. Which, you know, before, before this past year was probably maybe like five.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, we, we are, we are improving that way. Um, it, it's, it's just the. It's just some of that, cracking the code on, on getting people interested and I know that, you know, we've had the discussions of like the timing of the meetings and, and whatnot. Um, but. You know, I, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm just trying to knock everybody's head, just kind of see what, what I can do to try to get, get people out here. I think that. I wrote down that, you know, I need to maybe put more out there. On the social media about when our meetings are, you know, I have it in the, in the um, newsletters and stuff, but it's at the top and it's always in the same place. So people probably just glance over it and don't really. Re- like realize and I do put in, in the, in the um, thing about what happened at the meetings in the newsletter. Um, but I think that I, you know, I could definitely do a better job of promoting the. In the newsletter. Um, but I think that I, you know, I could definitely do a better job of promoting the, when the meetings are, what we're talking about. You know, maybe the Friday before, the Monday before the meeting.
I don't know. Personally, I think if we had a digital sign on top of our village sign here by the building with what's going on. It would be more effective than, as, as effective, I should say, as we're putting it on the internet. A lot of people don't look at the internet, but they do drive by the building or by the, up and down Ampton all the time. And for the price of a digital sign, and it gives, okay, we're having a meeting tonight or first Tuesday and Thursday, or whatever, you know, something. But it put it up there in front of their face so they see it, so they stop, so they at least question what's going on. Right now, if they don't go on the internet, they don't question. I think that's been a bigger problem right along. That's a separate discussion as well because we knocked down, we've knocked down that sign multiple times.
I know it, but I still think that sign is viable.
That's a big investment.
At the village board. There you go.
Uh, it's right, the.
Come get a free.
It's a, it's a start, right? It's a step, right? I mean, we don't know what we don't know, right? I don't know. It could work.
Our prize.
It could work, right? I mean, and, and to, you know, Ben saying he's gotten more traction on, on, you know, the Facebook sites and this and that. And I followed Pat's lead, you know, as of late, I'll take what Ben puts and then I'll repost it. On the other two uh, Butler sites that are on Facebook. Uh, and I think that's, you know, made some help as well. You know, Pat's kind of took the lead on that and I follow, so if she hasn't done it and I see it, I, I, I do it as well. Uh, I think those sites get a little bit more traction, but I want to get them to our site.
When I ran, when I was the PTA president for the six years that I ran the PTA for Dream and Immersion. The same question of how do we get more people to our meetings came up and we did that. We put out snacks and treats and, and some bakery and you'd be surprised at the people that showed up just for the free stuff.
Oh, sure.
But they showed up, right?
Yeah.
Right? So, uh, Charlene, I'm going to need you to bake a dozen cookies.
I heard you're good at it.
But, I mean, but those things, I mean, for as, for as gimmicky as it sounds, it, how do you know until you try? Stop by, have a cook, cookie and sit in on a meeting, you know? I too, I, I, when, when I post things for the community events. I crosspost between the two Butler sites, the Sussex and the Wawa Tosa site, because I'm on all four of those for, for different reasons. But I'm on them, but that's how people see that stuff. And I'm always quick to put, please share if you feel it's appropriate, so that if somebody sees it, they click on it and share it so that their people see it. Right? And I think those are just ways to continue creating that awareness around the things that we're talking about.
Chief, how was your, you know, coffee with a cop? How did, is it getting better? Cause you've done it now a couple of times. More.
Quality of the coffee?
Right. I mean, you got QuickTrip now, so I mean, it helps a little bit.
I think it drove. Sixteen.
You know, it was good. Um, same thing with the traffic order on social media. That's one example, but um, I think we had, we had a good turnout. Enjoyed themselves and I think, you know, maybe if you have an event like that, people get something out of it, they're going to find it.
Mm-hmm.
Share with other people or like.
Right, tell your neighbor.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, I mean, we, we have cookies and donuts there now, but those people are going to eat those. But I, I would consider that a successful event.
Yeah, I thought it was good.
We're working on some other ideas like a bike rodeo this summer and stuff.
Good to hear.
What about like name tags for the, maybe it's with our trustee name and.
And that's what I was thinking of. Um, there's a company that I'm, I'm familiar with from my past life. Um, as a deputy clerk that I think that I can reach out to um, to get those, because I, I was looking into it. Um, because uh, trustee Tarks has, has mentioned it to me, but to get, to get like a small amount. A lot, like some of these companies don't do the small ones, like you have to do like fifty. I'm like, we don't, we don't have fifty to make. Um, so um, I do have another company though, that I can reach out to, to try to see if, if that's something that we're interested in. Um, to, to get a, a quote on that.
I think you and Aaron should have name tags.
Just like take this one and.
Staple it.
Staple it.
Staple it.
Big chain. You get a big chain and you just. But I, I, I think that's another great idea because people don't know, so if they see it, maybe they'll start. Even while you, you're, you're working and doing the stuff as well, I think that could help. But I, you know, you know, coffee or donuts with the village board doesn't sound that crazy of, of, you know. Something, at least it, it's a start for us, for people to see us and to talk about. You know, I don't know what that really looks like, but I think it's something we should definitely consider.
Just to see what happens here and what's going on in their community. I realize that what, fifty percent of our community is rental, about a little more than that. So I mean, those people may not care, but you know.
They're not as invested, but you, you know.
They participate.
I think, I, I think they may care more than maybe we think. If they have families, I mean, I think that overpowers if I own a house or not in the community I live in. I think if I have a family and I'm renting, I still want to have the community, but maybe we need to let them know that, you know. You live here, your voice still does matter to us about you and your family. So it could be a conception that they don't understand.
And that would apply to businesses as well.
Mm-hmm, I, yeah, agree.
Get the owners involved and things like that. Uh, the name tags could be very simple, just village staff or something. They wouldn't have to have a last name, but then that could, well, what do you do at the village? And that could start the discussion. Well, I'm a trustee, I'm a president, I'm a clerk or something like that, just an idea. All right, any other comments? We'll, we'll keep that one on the agenda going forwards for future discussions. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I heard Brad and Eric. Uh, motion has been made in second and any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes, we're adjourned at six fifty-four. Thank you.